It's five o'clock. At this time, I'll call the Perry City Council work session for December the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty to order. We do have a quorum. Item three on our agenda this evening is items for review and discussion. Item three A is from the office of the mayor and three A one is selection of the two thousand and twenty mayor pro town. This does require a vote, so we will not be taking a vote this evening, but I wanted to get the process started because we know that we'll be going. This is our meeting tomorrow night. It'll be our last meeting in Jan- December of two thousand and twenty, thank goodness, and we'll be starting off a new year. And so we will, you know, it's the pleasure of the council as who serves as the mayor pro town for the year. Council member King has done outstanding job for us over the eight last nineteen months, I guess, eighteen or nineteen months that he served, and I truly appreciate his support and will acknowledge that for, you know, later on. But is there, there has, it appears to me there's been some discussion. Is the council at this point ready to make a nomination and know what you want to do as far as moving forward?
I nominate Robert.
Okay. So Robert is the nominee that will, is the nominee on the floor. Now, again, we can't vote on this. It's just an opportunity. If anybody has any additional discussion relative to that, I wanted to give you that opportunity this evening. Okay. We will move that to tomorrow night as an item that came out here on the agenda, and at that time, we will take the nomination and the vote of the actual, excuse me, mayor pro town for two thousand and twenty-one. Okay? Thank you very much. Item three B is the office of the city manager. Item three B one is G dot proposal for intersection improvements at Sam Nun Boulevard, W F Reagan Drive, Ball Street, and Washington Street. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, I refer you to the map that was provided in your board pack. This is a proposal coming over from the Georgia DOT to make improvements where the streets just listed from the mayor all intersect. One of the first things to start off with is there had been previous discussion about the possibility of having a roundabout at that intersection, and DOT has said no, that is not going to work. But what they are proposing is to put in some restrictions or guides within their existing right of way. Primarily, if you take a look at the map, the first one is that they would be restricting the egress from W F Reagan to a right turn out only and providing a U-turn opportunity downstream for motorists as needed. Second change would be channelizing left turns from Washington Street to W F Reagan with improved striping and concrete. Next change is channelizing left turns from Sam Nun to Washington with improved striping and concrete. Now, when they talk about concrete, they're just talking about raised concrete like curbing. They're not talking about a Jersey barrier or anything like that. And then last item is channelizing turns from Ball Street to Washington or Sam Nun with improved striping and concrete. They are talking about being able to use some quick response program money, and so therefore DOT is planning on having this as an improvement in FY two thousand and twenty-two. I'm bringing this to your attention to see if you would all be willing to concur with these improvements, although I guess technically DOT could do them anyway. But we had talked about this, and I figure it's always good to try and be on the good side of DOT when we can. So the administration's recommendation to council would be that you concur with these improvements. Now, they may have some spinoffs. You know, for example, people coming up W F Reagan and want to make the left-hand turn may wind up going through the Kroger Ace parking lot. Everybody with me there? Because they have that one drive before you get to the intersection. That is a possibility. However, I think the overall traffic flow improvements and everything would be beneficial, and we'd recommend to council to concur with DOT's proposed plan.
Let me ask you this. If you're coming off Reagan Drive and you want to go left, but you don't want to go down Ace Hardware, you would take a right and then get in that left lane and take a left over to Washington?
Yes.
Just make a large, but it'll be a semi, what I would characterize as a semi-traffic circle there.
Yeah, it is.
Because you're gonna, you're gonna, it eliminates that setting in the middle there when you come out.
That's a bad spot.
And so if people are coming down, they, and realistically, I guess if they'll turn left if they want to go down Washington, they'll go around the half circle and go, or they'll just, I think it's going to increase the flow of traffic on Ball Street is what it's trying to force people to, coming in downtown. I think it, what it looks to me, and maybe I'm bad wrong, but it looks like it's going to almost end up being a one-way, each-way coming out on Washington, and because if you come out on Ball, then you've got to make the left-hand turn, then you've got to make the left-hand turn, so. Mayor Protim, any question? Ms. Bynden Grace?
No, I have nothing.
Or is everyone agreeable to move forward?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Do you have concurrence? Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you.
Item three B two is review alternate sentencing proposal for the Perry Municipal Court. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, again, I refer to your data in that board pack. You will see a memo from me talking about how we have been approached by the clerk of the municipal court on using house arrest rather than jail time, if at all possible, for violators for municipal court. As you can see, there is a cost difference of forty dollars a day for the county jail versus ten to twelve dollars a day for monitoring. This has been reviewed by Judge Freeman. He is agreeable to give it a try. This has also been reviewed by Chief Lynn. Chief Lynn indicated he's willing to give it a try. This will not totally eliminate jail time because we'll have some folks that that's just what has to be done. But we do think that'll be beneficial. It'll also be beneficial from the county side, as Chief Lynn had mentioned, by reducing their population, not a huge amount, but working towards reducing their population in the jail. We would recommend, the administration recommends to you all that you concur with this proposal. We do anticipate it should save us some money, but it's hard to tell exactly how much.
Council members, questions relative to this change or recommended change?
I don't want.
Okay. Ms. Peterson, go ahead.
The fact that it takes us money is no consequence to me. People committed a crime that was worthy of going to jail, and I don't think our consideration would be, oh, here's a potential way we can save money. If they committed a crime that should land in the jail, I think they should go to jail. I'm sorry. I couldn't support this.
For clarification on that, what types of violations are we talking about in municipal court here? Because we're not talking about violent offenses or anything like that. What are some examples of what we'll be talking about?
Sure, I'll take a shot at that. So municipal court is limited in scope is what it can hear.
Right.
So nothing that would ever be of a felony grade goes to municipal court.
Right.
Some things that go to state court that are high aggravated misdemeanors don't go. So anything that's punishable under the state law by twelve months or less, typically what we're talking about is traffic offenses. I mean, the vast majority of things that go to municipal court are traffic offenses.
Right.
And then there's some other things like disorderly conduct, shop liftings of certain degrees, and, you know, some minor thefts. So that's typically what goes to municipal court.
Is it DUI at that court or?
DUI is in that court. It can be either or. It's typically in municipal court in our case. It moves through the system quicker than it would if you go into the state system, generally speaking. You would also have people violate their probation. You would potentially fall into this category as well.
And you were talking about folks that got a ticket, didn't pay it. They typically lose their license if they don't pay it. So those are one of the violators you were talking about?
Yes, ma'am. And typically, and of course, this is the part that the police don't do. This is the court's job, but typically, the jail sentence comes in for the ones that are noncompliant with the fine and other things that they've been asked to do. Sometimes they may go for a period of days, but then they'll get out after there's been a plea made, and of course, Ms. Dubby knows more about that side of it than I do, so.
Let me ask this as well. Are we seeing a lot of overcrowding in our system right now?
What we've been attempting to do through coordination with Houston County Sheriff's Office is reduce, reduce the jail population, which is typically in the five or six hundred person range as a running total. And with COVID since March, you know, we've all been acting cooperatively and through more accessible bonds and own recognizance bonds and different things like that to keep the population at a lower number, because every time they bring somebody in, they have to quarantine them. They have to isolate them for a period of time before they put them in the population. So we've, all the agencies have been working cooperatively to make that happen since March.
And Chief, do you see, I know it's your recommendation to do this, do you see any, this is a dramatic word, do you see any threat to public safety by these individuals being in house arrest versus being formerly incarcerated?
Well, I mean, there again, that is totally the purview of the court. You know, the punishment side is not the police side. You know, we enforce law, we make the cases, and what the court does is their purview, and this is part of that. I don't have an objection to it, but it's not really, you know, once we've arrested them and gone and testified, then our part in the criminal justice system is taken care of.
Would you define what house arrest means? I think that definition helps as well, so.
Well, my understanding, Mr. Gilmore, do you want to say that? I've got an understanding of it, but, so my understanding, this would be through electronic monitoring.
Okay.
With a GPS that's attached and you can't take it off without tampering with it. And then there's a tamper alarm that tells the monitoring service if it's been taken off. And so they find a geo site. It could be, I mean, presumably, they would let you go to work as well as people house arrest, but certain places that you're allowed to be and then everywhere else you're not, and it would tell them if you violate that.
And that's determined by the judge?
That's determined by the judge, you know, in coordination with the attorneys that are involved.
Ms. Dubby, you have any thoughts about that as far as your experience with it?
Just that in some cases, I know house arrest has been made an option in the past. I can't think right offhand of an example, but in certain situations, it has been made available in unique circumstances by the prosecutors. But in those situations, the defendant would actually pay the cost for the house arrest, because it was being, basically it was something they were being offered in lieu of actually going to jail.
Another question. So if they're in their home, there, there's no, nothing to bar their access of people coming in and out of their homes that still remain in their same element which they were living when they decided to head away. Is that correct?
To my, to my understanding, this is Chief, Chief, I'm behind you. You can't see me, but that's my understanding. Yes, ma'am.
But that is true.
As far as we know, yes, unless there's some other condition that's specified by the judge.
Okay.
But under the present circumstances with the way things are right now, I think it's worth a try because of, you know, in a, I think it'll do several things. The expense won't be on us if they are incarcerated, if they get ill or what have you. They're usually not on house arrest that long for the, for the kind of crimes that he was talking about. You know, we looked at a lot of this stuff with the trust initiative, and so I think it's just worth a try. As I say, to save us that, you cannot leave your home unless, unless you cut off that monitor, because somebody will be monitoring you twenty-four hours a day with that monitor. So I think it's worth a try under these present circumstances.
They're going to be able to go to work.
Well, all of them won't be able to go to work.
No, but, going back to what Chief said, a lot of times, calling what kind of situation it's in, then they're going to be able to go to work, but they have to go to work to pay the bill, pay what, what they're supposed to be paying. You know what I mean? Somebody got that, who going to pay it? If they, if they don't have a job, you know what I mean? This is a whole concept of if they got caught up in a situation in which Chief and the police office will take, take them to the court, and the judge make that call, then these people are going to have to continue to work, pay the bill or not. We're going to have to put them back in jail. They're going to have to sit there. And see, that's another thing. That will be another cost for us. And that, that's the thing that we, I think we kind of eliminate some of the costs, so we have to really, like going back to what Chief said, I think it's based on actually what the judge is going to say, or is going to work. Going back to what Ms. Bynden Grace said, well, we will try and see how it's going to work. If it's going to work, I think it'll be a good deal. If not, we've got to come up with a monthly.
It's not, but it's not mandated that the judge does that. That's another tool in his toolbox.
That's right.
So I trust the judge. They don't want to put somebody in jail that needs to be in jail. This is just somebody who's, I don't know, that's paid a ticket for two or three months and sort of put them in jail for five days, you do home arrest. Just gives them another option.
I think that's a significant point, though, because it's not a carte blanche for anybody that comes to form municipal court to be under house arrest. It just gives the judge the authority to have further discretion at sentencing. Is that my understanding correct there?
Do you have any feedback, Lee, from Judge Freeman as to why he would be willing to accept this? Because, I mean, he, he seems to agree that this is the way we ought to go.
My understanding from talking with the judge is that he thinks this is a more viable alternative in some cases, going back to Dr. Albrecht, instead of putting them, that person in jail. And that's one of the things why we talk about the city paying the monitoring cost with that as well, because we don't want to get into a situation where, and Ms. Bynden Grace touched on this, about where only the more well-to-do violators get this option. And if you don't have that type of money, then you don't, and you have to wind up going to jail. So the judge's position is to have this other alternative instead of having by default just going to jail.
Additional questions? Ms. Peterson, any questions?
Well, I feel like their ability to pay their bills and support their family should have been part of their thought process before they decided to commit a crime. So I don't, I don't know. I'm just not, I'm just not soft on crime. I'm just not. And I know this is not, you know, pardoning criminals we're talking about here, but I think when the general perception is there are things that you can do and get by with and never go to jail, when that gets to be commonly known, then I believe that has an adverse effect. That's just my personal opinion.
So Chief, how many people do we have in, in the county jail right now? What's the population out there? I know you've cut it considerably.
In regards to people that are there because of the city, I don't have a number. I think on average, the population right now is running between two hundred and fifty and three hundred, which is somewhere around half of what it was pre-COVID. But, and, and like I said, we're all working together to try to, it's not that we're just, you know, not arresting people at all. It's we're trying to be smart about who stays in jail versus who gets bound.
It, my whole point is it's been, this has been going on in some form or fashion, whether it's home arrest or, or not sentencing them to jail for the whole purpose of trying to reduce that population because of COVID right now and the outbreaks that they've had over there and so.
Right. And, and probably from the city of Perry's perspective, Perry at least for most of those would be under state or superior, state court or superior court charges as opposed to city charges anyway.
Right.
Be a smaller percentage under city charges. And so the judge, Judge Freeman's been involved in trying to reduce that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions, concerns relative to this? Okay. Dr. Albrecht, your, your thought on it? Yes, no? It's not a vote. Are you, are you in concurrence?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. It's kind of like, I don't know, joy is, to me, when I was a school principal, a kid did something wrong, and they were failing all their classes, we would put them in, in school suspension, and they would miss for three days all their classes. And then the board gave us an option of doing Saturday school, detention or whatever, so that they wouldn't miss their classes. This is kind of something similar, I think, to that, but I understand and respect your, your viewpoint also. I'm good with it.
Your, Mr. Jones?
For me, Mayor, I, I mean, I, I'll take the word of Judge Freeman. I think he has done a great job serving in municipal court. And if he sees this as a matter to give them more discretion, and then, you know, I trust his word and I trust the judgment on that. So I, that's, that's what I'm, it's a little sense of willing to try that for his recommendations.
Reverend King?
Yes, I think. Ms. Bynden Grace?
Mr. Gilmore, you got four? She said, she said no already. Yes, she was not in favor of it. She, I think that's what you said, was it not? Ms. Peterson? Hey, Ms. Peterson, are you muted?
Consequences. I think we don't have consequences. We're not, not likely to change our behavior. So that's just me. That's my vote. No.
Okay. So you got a four to one on the concurrence to move forward. I would like for us to make this, you know, as we go through COVID and everything, keep in mind that this is a temporary situation, and I would like to understand going forward how it works. And I don't know how we measure that. If we have a problem with it, I guess that would come back through Judge Freeman, if he's having, experiencing a problem with people that he's put on house arrest. And I would like to know that in the future.
Well, you would have that, or if the costs start to escalate, it was part of this program. That'd be something we'd have to go and check and see on.
Thank you. Item three C is the police department. Three C one is discussed parking in neighborhood streets. Chief Lynn?
Yes, sir. So
So, Mr. Gilmore asked me to just kind of give the council an update. This has been an issue for some time, and community development's been involved, fire's been involved. We've looked at it from the standpoint of access and ingress to neighborhoods, especially with the larger equipment. We've done studies, we don't see issues with that, but we continue to get complaints from some neighborhoods about all the people that park on the curbs. And some of this is a function of, I think, probably smaller lot sizes in some neighborhoods, less setback from the road. I gather people use their garages for something other than parking cars, and, so, you know, so you know, with two cars in driveway, one on the curb, and so, we get calls, and the fact of the matter is, from the Police Department standpoint, unless, unless a neighborhood is posted for no parking, or, you know, the curb is, you know, painted such a color, it could be either or, then we, we can't, you know, we can't issue a no parking ticket. And I think since this is, and this seems to be our neighborhoods that are, I would say mostly under 10 years old probably, and I think it's being addressed in some of the zoning, some of the community development stuff going forward, but, and you can ride to any number of these neighborhoods, and you'll just see what I mean, there's cars parked on the curb left and right, and I, I'm not raising, I, I didn't raise it to the city managers about, you know, in, in form of complaint, just to heads up, that, you know, we still get these calls. And, and one of my officer, one of my officers answered a call last week, and the guy says, tell Chief Lynn, this is the second time I've called, don't make me come get on his, you know what. So, which, you know, I turned around and, and sent them an email right on, just, just to let them know that this is still a topic of conversation. I don't know that we want to do anything, but he wanted me to just kind of let y'all know that this still, I know we've had this conversation in some form, I don't know, a year and a half, maybe a duration, off and on periodically, you know, we run in spurts. The most recent call I got was one of the streets behind Matt Arthur Elementary School. That was the one last week, so, that's what I know about.
I would think that the neighborhood behind Matt Arthur School, what appears is they've got adequate parking in most of those homes, I would think, and the streets are fairly wide, so, I mean.
And, you know, I, I, some of it probably comes down to the perception of the people that live there, and, and I, I don't recall the street, I could look at my phone and find the email, but, you know, this, apparently this particular gentleman I've talked to before myself, although I can't honestly say that I remember that, but, we have sent our officers out at different times of the day to assess the streets, and we don't have any emergency vehicle access issues that we can tell, which is, I guess, the, the primary importance. And we do refer them to homeowners associations, but I've yet to have anybody tell me that their homeowner association would take care of the problem, so I defer.
So what would you like from us to see?
I, I, I didn't come with a request, sir, I just, I just, kind of, right, I, I didn't have one from the beginning, it was just kind of an awareness thing.
I got a statement. Chief, are this coming from several people in that community, or is this coming from one person in that community?
Reverend King, I, you know, it, it's cyclical, so we might get two or three from a community, and then we might, I can't say when the last one we had from this particular neighborhood, although I can tell you, we've had that complaint and other ones about school time traffic and, and crosswalks and stuff, you know, so they, they come and go over time, and those kind of things, we don't necessarily try, so.
But on the extension, the new extension of Legacy Drive, it's, you have to stop as you go along that street, you have to stop and wait for the person that's coming toward you to come by so that you can go around who's parked on the street. There's one truck with a good-sized trailer that's been parked on the street for months. I, any time of day or night, I've gone by there, it's there, I, I don't, I don't understand how they're, you know, what's going on with that, but it's, it's significant along Legacy.
Gilmore, your thoughts?
Yes, I asked the chief to come and talk to you about this because, in my opinion, following up on Ms. Peterson's, it's an issue that's not gonna go away. You're going to, first of all, I want to emphasize it's not citywide as a problem, but there are certain neighborhoods that seem to have this issue. You may remember, we've talked about this before. You were advised, well, the homeowners association will take care of that, and that just does not work. And so therefore, I think it's important for council to give some type of direction out there rather than having Steve's behind beat up by a neighborhood out of, some guy in a corner. As far as I can tell, though there may be some other variations, I think there are, at least for initial talking points, two options that you all can take. The first one is where this problem appears to come up, following up on Steve's point, is you go out there, pass the corresponding ordinance about no parking in the street, we put up the signs, paint the curbs, and the police is good to go. Now, I think the result on that is going to be, A, particularly the council members in District 2, are going to get a lot of calls and complaints about that, and you're gonna wind up with vehicles over the sidewalks, up in the yard, you know, whatever the case may be, to avoid, you know, getting a ticket. The second option, which I think would be better, at least at this time, is that council says we're not taking any direct action like that, however, any vehicle that is parked in the street, when emergency vehicles come by to respond, is subject to being towed, being damaged, being pushed aside, whatever the case may be, so that the emergency vehicles can get through. If you, that is our basic position right now. If you agree to concur with that, then my office, underneath the mean city manager's name, will send out notice, you know, to all these affected property owners advising them that that is the city's position relative to that. I think that option, at least right now, would be a better option to take rather than enforcing no parking.
Ms. Gilmore, I have one question. Everything you said is, is well, is there any way that, I know in the past, a lot of times, we have a situation, and sometimes you can reach out to another county, another city, and see if they have the same problem, and what, what solution did they come up with that same situation, or like you said, going back to what Ms. Peterson said, one of the things is that, when these, building these communities, and look like they got three or four people in the family driving cars, you know what I mean, I said, and then this seemed to be a problem because everybody can't get in the driveway, and like you said, they, they get on the street, you know what I mean, so, I don't know if, if it'd be feasible for us to, for you to reach out to another community before we drop our bomb down, you know, to make that decision. I think that's one of the things that, we can see that other communities probably don't have the same problems, and they might have a solution to it, and maybe we can take it back on the legal in, in our community.
I would be happy to, Mayor Protem. My experience has indicated that, number one, if it is not a main traffic, if it is a main traffic route, as however it's designated in that particular community, they do the posting about no parking, and you just can't park on it. If it's not one of those, like generally residential neighborhoods, which are the ones that we're getting calls on and everything, they don't do anything with it, and then you just can have some difficulties on times getting through the neighborhood streets.
I think what Chief has said, we have addressed this through planning and zoning. If you remember, we've added setbacks and also requirements to have widths on the side of the house so that cars can be moved to the backyard, plus a parking pad on the side, so, and Mr., I think a lot of it has been addressed already to see if we can alleviate that. So, Mayor Protem, as I understand, you want to hold up on any discussion with this until Mr. Gilmore can get back with any others?
Well, that's your suggestion, I mean, so, Mr. Gilmore kind of helped put it, if you feel that it comes to us to decide, the posting stuff out there, and then, I don't know, give people the warning or citation or whatever, you know, to let them know that we're not gonna tolerate this, you know what I mean, I don't know, we're probably gonna have a lot of people in the community coming in here to discuss this, you know what I mean, we're gonna have to, like you said, we gotta have to make a decision sooner or later, because we got complaints in that community, or a different community about this is happening. So like you said, we gonna have to make a decision, one way or another, you know what I mean, and then once we make it, we need to stand by it.
I think, I think the Mayor Protem's suggestion is an excellent one, so we'll proceed with that, and then come back with you, let you know what we find out.
Very good. Everybody okay with that? Additional information?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Item 3D is Community Development Department. 3D 1 is update on water and sewer projects. Mr. McMurray and Mr. Murk, the floor is yours. Mayor Council, Murk and I have worked closely, and he's gonna give you an update. I'm here for any questions to come in. Boy, that was a welcome. I just introduced him here for you. All right.
Watch out for that guy, man.
Welcome, glad to have you with us.
Yes, sir, may I walk up?
And your spokesman, too.
Absolutely. Very, very helpful. Mr. Mayor, Council, City Staff, thank you so much for your, your time this evening. Give an update on the status of several city projects that definitely have an impact on our community in hand. We'll talk about the upgrade for Perry Branch Sewer Upgrade Project, Langston Road, Stormwater Pond, the inert waste transfer station Phase 1 bid, Tucker Road water replacement bid, and the core water and sewer extension bid, and pre-wood storm grade improvements bid. Just quick updates on those, Mr. Worthington will be addressing those with you tomorrow night. Our first project that I want to discuss tonight is the Perry Branch Sewer Upgrade Project. As you know, there have been continuous issues with sewer overflows on the Perry Branch Sewer main that goes through the heart of Perry. Just giving a quick status update, previously the city had acquired the easements for this project between 2008, 2011, and we have verified that those easements do exist at the courthouse. Roughly our design is at a 60% level, which is a good opportunity to bring you up to speed on my progress and where we believe that this project will fall. In the Pinkerton Drive and Forest Avenue Sewer Evaluation Project that we completed in 2018, we looked at sewer flows in the area, and we're hoping that we could utilize piping of substantial size to handle future development, any I-9 issues, and the existing load that the system has on it. As part of that, we have gone through a modeling and have determined that the system now is, consists of eight-inch, 10-inch, and 12-inch pipe, those will need to be upgraded to 15- and 18-inch pipe sizes. And we have worked very closely with Mr. McMurray and ESG staff on I-9 issues. We believe that the 18-inch pipe will handle all of the I-9 currently experienced through the system as the city continues its I-9 program throughout the city. So it gives the city flexibility to identify areas of larger concern after this project is complete with I-9. Schedule for this project, we hope to be bid ready by the end of February. We also took it upon ourselves to take some value engineering initiatives to help reduce the cost of this project, and we worked through a lot of those with Mr. McMurray and ESG staff. Such would be any sewer outside of the pavement, we would abandon. We will have aerial crossings over at least two strings. These are already aerial crossings. To get below the string bed would actually cause the depth of the pipe to exceed depths of 14 feet, up to 20 to 22 feet. That will substantially increase the cost of this project, so through these value engineering initiatives, trying to get the cost under control. Others we have looked at is our roads that are not considered main access roads for daily traffic that would see a lot of traffic, especially from larger vehicles such as semis and work vehicles. Duncan, Tucker, and James Street, those would be open cut as opposed to jack and bore. So we would be looking at jack and boring Main Street, keeping it open as a major throughfare for the city and the downtown. Where as possible, utilize four-foot diameter manholes as opposed to five-foot, and in the construction at James Street, just prior to the upgrades that will be happening from, that, that is a possible alternative if the cost truly comes in over budget, but this project should take all the way up to Kings Chapel Road, which would be the, the true end. So those are value engineering initiatives. Our opinion of probable cost at this point is $2.37 million. The budget that we had hoped to shoot for was roughly $2 million, but we are at a 60% design level, and I do tend to be very conservative, but realistic with our numbers, and so therefore we would hope that we will come on budget with this project as we go, get into the bidding process, potentially at the end of the first quarter of 2021, pending the city's approval to do so. Any questions on Perry Branch Sewer Upgrades?
Council members, any questions relative to this upgrade? Okay, thank you.
The next project up for discussion is the Langston Road Stormwater Pond. As you all are aware, there's current development and future development that may happen at the intersection of Langston Road and Houston Lake Road, on both the east and west sides of Houston Lake Road. The city has reviewed several plans within the last year for additions to subdivisions in this area, and even further background, these, these developments were all constructed under the context of a stormwater management detention facility that would be able to control stormwater as development occurs. So these developments have been given the authorization to proceed and be constructed, but the existing detention pond that is there now, the Stormwater Pond, is not adequate to handle that, it was never built to its design intent. So, a brief project status is, we have completed our survey, we have completed the geotechnical investigation, and have provided the city our preliminary engineering report. Topics of discussion is, the original pond was supposed to be nine acres, but because of existing development that has occurred since 2005, as well as potential development, that we have worked with the city staff on, now the pond needs to be 12 and a half acres to handle all the stormwater that is coming to it. There is a, if you note, driving by Houston Lake Road and look over, there is a construction going along the western border of where this stormwater pond was intended to be, they are hauling out a tremendous amount of dirt right now, and not bringing it into the site, so there may be some potential- So there may be some potential to work with the property owner to acquire that additional land from them based on their future plans. Development statistics, what's driving this, just really quick, there's 200 acres of developable land at this junction, 170 acres of residential, R1 zoning, and 30 acres of commercial, this was coordinated with city staff based on existing and future development there. So one of the things we were tasked with is how much is this going to cost the city to provide stormwater detention for all the development that is occurring? We estimate roughly that land acquisition may cost the city $185,000. Now, that is under the context that the property owners will not donate that to the city, that the city would have to acquire, but I think the city has a very good opportunity to negotiate with the property owners because this will benefit their property, you're giving the city, excuse me, is giving these developments all of the stormwater requirements that they require by city standards, so they're basically getting a service from the city. Construction at this point, at the 30% level, we're estimating at $915,000, but there are some contingent items, they have hauled out a tremendous amount of dirt that we were estimating that would have to be removed regardless, and so that may have benefited the city if that land is acquired. Impact fees with land acquisition for each new residential lot, roughly $2,300 per lot, and commercial would be roughly $5,500 per acre, and that is if the city were to acquire the land. Impactings with that land acquisition, we roughly did $1,900 per lot, and commercial would be $4,575 per acre. So there's still a lot of unknowns, but we definitely wanted to bring to your attention because this is a substantial investment on the city's behalf. We have a map here showing the limits of where this pond would be located. Langston Road is up here, we have Highway 127 here, and the dam of the Stormwater Pond would be here, and you can see we're using the natural topography to acquire all the 12 and 1/2 acres that would be needed to detain for a 100-year storm. The purpose of the Stormwater Pond also is to meet water quality and channel protection requirements that the city requires for all development in the areas. So this is somewhat of the shape of the pond if it were full. Now, this will be a dry detention pond, it will not be a re-dention pond being wet, we will count on infiltration as determined by a geotechnical investigation for water to seep into the ground as well as being released downstream toward Houston Lake. Are there any questions on the Langston Road Stormwater Pond?
Question?
I have one question, you were saying about the lake is raised, when I look at it, like you said, they've been moving dirt out of there, and then when you, as a builder housing that section, would the lake overflow, you saying the lake going to take water to the other lake down there, so you got to build a bridge or what?
No, sir. We were designed the pond so that it would not overflow and give it some freeboard, the state's going to require that we have 2-foot of freeboard, so even at full capacity, we would still be 2 feet from overtop.
Thank you. I did my part.
The last are our bid results for the four projects that we had out for bid. I'll start first with the Intermodal Waste Transfer Station, Phase 1A. We received seven bids, our recommendation award, which was the word that we will discuss tomorrow night for your consideration, San Hall and Sons. The base bid amount was $236,000. This includes the access road to the site as well as site improvements for the Intermodal Waste Transfer Station. Our opinion of probable cost was $235,000, so we were right on the money to where we thought the bid should fall. But we are going to recommend that the city consider an additional $36,000 as to the bid. This would cover unknowns with acceptable dirt that will be brought to the site from another project area, and this is just assurance that if the dirt is not suitable, that the city has it already approved, that more dirt will be brought in. The determination of that suitability will be made by myself as well as city staff. We believe the dirt will be acceptable, but just we want to make sure that we're covering our bases, but that's up to the city to decide. Next project, Hampton Court Water and Sewer Extension, we received five bids, recommendations piles funded with utility contractors. The bid amount was $87,080. Our opinion of probable cost was $150,000. So the city got a very good bid that we are recommending that the city accept. Our Tucker Road Corporate Replacement, we received six bids, our recommendation award for clay construction, the bid amount was $91,710. Our opinion of probable cost was $105,000, so again, got a great bid and we are recommending that recommendation award.
Remind me where that's located?
Yes, sir. That is almost, if you were heading past Frank Satterfield, New Water Treatment Plant Number 3, going down into that bottom, and before you come back up to Hill Road, it is that hole right there. Currently, there are three corrugated metal pipes that are failing, the painting walls on both sides are failing. This was more or less an emergency project to ensure public safety.
This was, I guess, the string that runs by Edgar Bartel's house?
Yes, sir. The metal is...
It's on, it's on the other side of the metal property, past Riley's house, down that area.
Yes.
And there was some discussion relative to the landowners' concern about their ponds that we, have we addressed, addressed that?
Yes, sir, we did. Our design is not allowing any more water to be released than it is now.
Okay.
But I will go on record and say that their ponds downstream are not adequate in size to handle the flow that it will see in a large storm.
Right. I know that they had brought that up, and I knew that we were talking about it, so...
Yes, sir.
Any question? Yeah, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. The final is Pre-Blue Storm Drains improvements. If you recall, we originally bid this project in September, we received two bids. Unfortunately, they were not realistic bids. We recommended the city would throw the bids out, and we did, which was done. We also went through an effort of value engineering. I personally sat down with a local contractor who did not bid this job, but he provided value engineering assistance to help reduce construction costs. We felt very confident that we could bring in a good bid and had the opportunity to negotiate into the city's budget. We received four bids. Unfortunately, the low bidder was deemed non-responsive. The second highest bid, or excuse me, second lowest bid was well outside of the city's budget, it was deemed, no negotiations would bring it back within the city's budget. We feel that this project can be achieved within the city's budget and be a good project. We are recommending that we revisit the project again, unfortunately.
Questions, councilmembers?
Some speculation on that second one, they didn't want to get it within the range that we handed up, are you a lot to talk about it of?
Yes, yes, so the bid that was received, they did not acknowledge an addenda that included a new bid form, and so they submitted a bid that had some missing information as well as not up-to-date information, and so therefore it was deemed non-responsive, and we did deference for this movie on that. And so the second lowest bid was $220,000 higher than low bid, and so it just didn't seem reasonable that they could negotiate down to where we need to do. But I am confident that we will be able to get a bid within the city's budget and negotiate through that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions or concerns? Thank you, sir. Council, you guys got a lot of things going on.
Yes, we do, we appreciate everything the city allows us to do, thank you very much.
Thank you. Item four, councilmember items, Ms. Peterson?
I'm going to give y'all the Paul Harton version of this. We ate at Waffle House the other night and encountered a lady who was also working the night that we saw the lady in distress, and I said, "Whatever happened with her? Did they get the gurney in?" And she said, "Oh, no ma'am, they could not get the gurney in." Fortunately, the lady had a collapsible wheelchair in her car, so they got her personal wheelchair out, got her, went into the store, got her into that, brought her outside, and put her on the gurney. And she said, "Oh, no ma'am, there was no way that gurney was coming in the door." And I said, "Well, you know, the city's been assured that that will work," and she said, "Well, they couldn't, those men that were there couldn't do it." And we talked about the possibility that perhaps in some of their newer store designs, that there's perhaps more space, this isn't, you know, that's an older Waffle House where we were out there by the crack of the bell. And so we went and looked at the one at Ed Village, and you know, when you go in that door, you have to make an immediate U-turn to go, once you go in a one door, your next turn is an immediate U-turn. So I don't know how a stretcher does it, but I guarantee you, it doesn't happen behind the crack of the barrel. If they've talked about giving us a demonstration, I'd like to see that demonstration. They were, they were, those two gentlemen were unable to get that lady and had to use her personal wheelchair to get her out. So I just thought y'all might like to know the rest of that story. And my song.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem King?
I have one situation, I had a young lady call me on Kingston Road, and at 124 Kingston Village, and she was complaining about somebody messed up her property, have a tree limb blown over her property, and she was wondering if there's anything that they can do about it, and I think, she said she talked to the court informant, he said, "You have..." I was making the tree cutting for private, to private property, and her name was Natalie Ferguson, she lived at 124 Kingston Village Drive, and she wanted to know, is it her responsibility to cut somebody a tree off her property? And she need, need an answer to that, and that I told her I'd bring it up, and so I have her phone number, if you want to get this information, because she having a problem with somebody else's tree blown over on her property. And so that's the situation that she want to know, that she's supposed to cut the tree, somebody else's tree off her property. And you, you want to name the number? I got it in, y'all should talk to them.
She's a personal friend of mine.
You know her, okay, well, I'm just saying, she called me.
I know, she's called all of us, so...
I know that Mr. Hicks has been out there to check on it, too, so, but...
Do you want to do a...
I think it'd be appropriate for Ms. Newby to start off relative to this.
Certainly, if it's just between two private property owners, then it wouldn't be the city's issue. Only if it's something that would be within the right of way, would the city be involved in it. And so it would be something that she would need to reach out to, if she can't have a conversation directly with her neighbor and talk about it, and then working something out, then she may wish to seek her own legal counsel.
Thank you.
Or she can get tree cutting service or her neighbor to go up there and cut it that comes over on her property. She's got every right to do that.
Okay, all right, yeah, thank you.
She would like for the city to come out and cut it, because it's a cost issue, so...
Right, but we, so y'all may remember, we've been down this road a number of times, so...
Yes, we have, I just allowed the court, that's all I'm saying. I done what I supposed to do.
Exactly, your job, city.
Yes, my job is finished.
Do you want us to contact her, contact her then?
Right.
Okay.
You want to phone them?
Yeah.
It's 478-213-9840, her name is Natalie Ferguson, she lives at 124 Kingston Village.
We've given her that answer twice already, that we've actually gone on, so I looked at the tree, and it does come out, and she didn't like it because the leaves fall on her root, and...
Is she the older lady? Is she the older lady?
Yeah, there's a fence there, and there's sort of a no man's land in between the two fences, their fence, but it belongs to the people on the other street, and so we've instructed her that she could cut it herself, you know, and she doesn't, doesn't like that answer, she would, she would like for us as a city to eliminate it, so...
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore.
There'll be a follow-up saying, "Mr. King did exactly what you asked her to," and the answer is still no.
Ms. Bounde Grace?
Well, I want to piggyback on what Joy said with a couple of questions to Dr. Albright as well as to the chief. You might be familiar with the striker chairs that we put in for emergencies in all our school buildings? That would be something that could actually be used to take a person out of a place like what she's talking about. Is your truck equipped with striker chairs?
Ma'am, I don't have any trucks.
I'm shooting, I'm thinking I'm out of here. I'm like, I'm sorry, I was thinking about the other chief.
Wrong chief.
Wrong chief. But anyway, Joy, there is a chair called a striker chair that we need to look into for our police fire department, because if they are the first, the first ones on the scene, that is something that is very useful and very easy to get a person out that's ill. It's called a striker chair.
Well, I know that it's, it just seems like I could not let that go, but I just, we stood there and watched it, and watched the gurney bang first one way and then the other, and then when the server told us, said, "No ma'am, they were not able to get in, they had to use the lady's own wheelchair that she happened to have in her car." So, I mean, I would think that's something that would be something to look at, that's, that's, I wouldn't even be aware, if I had not observed it myself, I'd have...
Okay, well, that chair will take care of the needs of buildings like the one that you just talked about, and I think we might need to look at it and see whether we, whether the fire chief thinks is something that he can carry on his truck.
Sounds good.
Well, Gilmore will follow up with the chief.
You remember what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Anything else to try and...
No, I just wanted to, say, there is something out there that is very useful for a situation like that.
Thank you. Mr. Young? Dr. Albright, anything this evening?
No, sir.
So we got Ms. Peterson, so that takes everybody there. Mr. Gilmore?
No, sir.
Nothing to you? Ms. Pookie, anything from the city attorney?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Nothing tonight? Mr. McMurray, anything else you'd like to stand on?
Nothing you want to elaborate on?
Item five is department head items, and I think the only, or chief, anything?
I'd want to clarify, I think the comment that was made by my officer about the citizen was intended to be humorous, it was taken as such, I didn't feel threatened in any way, I just wanted to clarify that, so, but nothing other than that, thank you. But nothing other than that, thank you.
And I understand that Ms. Clark would like to show us a demo on the new website.
Absolutely. Mayor and council, Ms. Galfield, if I can bring it up. I'm pleased to bring to you a demo of the new website that we are putting together. The website vendor is Network Technology Solutions from Thomasville, Georgia. They have been outstanding as far as their feedback, as well as their responsiveness for me creating this. When we talked about designing a new website, we did three criteria that we must have. One was a modern design that showed the city's progressiveness. The other one is ease of access, making sure that the citizen, visitor, business, whoever they are, can access their information easily. And also visual storytelling. We want to make sure that we are able to show the city and the charm that it has. So on the homepage, most important information can be found without scrolling. That's what we wanted to make sure that we did. So you can tell, the graphic banners, they'll be updated with the most recent professional photography that we had done, as well as any type of news. So if we have something that needs to be shown right there at the beginning, all of this is customizable. Also, the alerts, you'll notice on the right-hand side are COVID-19 information. This allows us to have alerts on the page where it is prominent, but it doesn't overtake the website like it does right now. Also, you'll notice moving down the welcome bar, this is our how-do-I section where we have frequently asked questions. The how-do-I is on the website right now, but it is not as easily accessible as it would be right here. So they would just basically click on the bar, and then all the frequently asked questions will be here. Moving down as well, you'll see that the graphic quick links, these are the most visited webpages that we have now with the city. So you'll see the agendas, the minutes, customer service, of course, news, employment, online bill pay. These also can be interchanged as well and customized if you find that another page is being accessed more often. They can be interchanged as well. Ms. Galfield, if you scroll down just a little bit, you'll see our period welcome video, as well as if you keep scrolling. That hasn't been completely mitigated yet, but our community events will show up, as well as our public meetings. So the average user will be able to see these in real time, as well as the ID's anyway. If you'll scroll up just a little bit for me, all the way to the top. Another thing that I'd like to point out is you'll see at the top where it says government, business services, residential services, public safety, and of course, the frequently asked questions, how-do-I. If you'll click on the government, you'll see that some of these, like I said, they're continuing to mitigate, but basically, we wanted the person, the average user, to come in and say that they needed a government service, businesses, residential, or public safety. So we wanted to make sure that if somebody was looking for the mayor's office, they would click government, and then, you know, you can click on the mayor's office. And you can see kind of a much cleaner design that we have now. If you'll scroll down just a little bit more, and you can see where all that information is, is compacted there. Scroll up just a little bit for me. Can you click on City Council right under government, please? You'll see also where each page will have a description of what it's about, and then of course, you'll see your lovely faces all the way to the left, as well as the pertinent information to the right. So we're very excited about this with our many menus and just our ease of information access. We do have demos for our downtown page, as well as our economic development page. Those demos are forthcoming. We're focusing on the city page right now, but we're hoping to launch all of them by the beginning of the year. Is there any questions I can answer for you?
Councilmember?
That's good, very good, very good, very good.
Think it's for your lot of friend later.
Yes, we want to make sure that there was plenty of opportunities for people not to have to search for information, which is kind of the situation now where a lot of things are hard to find. And of course, we wanted, this gives a little bit more image of the actual city as far as the pictures that we have, as well as the modern design.
Our phone numbers under our name, if you click on them?
We haven't gotten that far yet. Your email is there, for sure. That's the email we've negotiated, so.
We were sleeping at night, my friend.
Is that about how far we're going?
But we are very excited. Network Technology Solutions, as I said, has been an excellent vendor so far. We are establishing a great relationship, and they are very involved with their service. So it was, it was a great decision on this vendor. Can't say enough great things about them. And we're very excited to get it kicked off. So I'm pushing very hard for them to keep working their platform.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Thank you, sir.
They didn't just come together, I know. Do you have anything else for us this evening?
No, sir, that's it, thank you.
I think that covers everyone that's here this evening. So is there anything else to come before us? Like we remind everybody that our pre-council meeting will be tomorrow night at 5:00, and it will be back at the ARC Center. And then our city council meeting will be at 6:00. All of our meetings are open to the public, and we invite the public's interest and participation. If there's nothing else to come before us at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Motion second, all in favor, please indicate by raising your right hand.